Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, July 28, 2025 at 6:30 PM. I would like to make recognition of all members of council present this evening, including City Administrator Mahenko. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four this evening, there is no general. Item number five is committee correspondence to council. Are there any councilor's members wishing to share? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Redwoods.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is from the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and they'd like to note that we've seen an increase in e-bike usage in Saco, and several city departments and advisory bodies are collaborating to incorporate e-bike safety messaging into the city's ongoing Safe Streets educational campaign. This is in particular in response to some e-bike accidents and incidents that have resulted in injury. As a result of this, there's going to be a newly printed flyer and ongoing digital postings that are going to stress the importance of riding e-bikes safely, explain what rules and regulations are in place, and direct viewers to additional training materials. The flyer is going to be handed out at upcoming city events, including National Night Out and Harbor Fest, and is going to be distributed through the city's online platforms. They'd like to thank the Saco Police, Fire, Planning, and Communications Department, and Saco's Traffic Safety Committee for working together to connect community members to this important information. And if you want to learn more about what the city is doing for Safe Streets, you can go to sacomaine.org/safestreets.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Redwoods.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things. One, Saco Main Street, the organization is not sleeping in August. There will be music on Main. It's at the corner of Store and Main here, off Main Street. Hemlock Hill Echo will be playing in the swell patio. And so that looks to be a great event, and you can come and bring your chairs and listen to some great music. Also, Age Friendly Saco on the 14th will be having another delicious luncheon. On Thursday, August 14th, the doors will open at 11:30 AM, and that's at the 68 Ocean Park Road Saco. That's the Elks Club, if you are from around town and you know where you are. Registration will be required. You want to go to the website, agefriendlysaco.org, I believe, to register. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hewitt?
The Dyer Library on August 15th is going to have a preview night for their annual book sale, and then on August 16th through 30th, the book sale will continue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. The last traffic safety meeting, I guess that was a week and a half ago, the committee voted to forward a request to council to petition the state to do a valuation of the speed on the Jenkins Road. So that should be coming our way at some point in the future. It requires council to approve it and request that the state do a speed study and evaluation for any potential changes. Then additionally, the, well, there'll be a special joint meeting with BPAC for August that will be a facilitated meeting where we will be reviewing a matrix of sidewalks and other pedestrian-related amenities, hopefully to come to one consensus for future pedestrian amenities as part of the master plan that we are currently working on. So I thought that was important to get out there, potentially, you know, other counselors might want to attend. And then lastly, it was recently discovered at the most recent Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting that because of our recent change to the charter, where we now require appointed members to be registered voters, we've always, I should have said this first, we've always had a student member of those, and so now that they're required to be registered voters, we have a problem with having a student member. So that's a potential change for charter. Obviously, that takes a longer period of time, but I kind of reviewed this and have come up with a creative way to amend code to allow it. So I'd like to bring that forward in the future so that we can have that student as part of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Moving on to item number six, that is public comment. If you have a, if you'd like to step forward, state your name and address at the podium, you will have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Steve Hewitt from 380 Main Street in Saco. I'm here tonight to speak out against a demonstration product, project at the Bedford end of Main Street on Factory Island, specifically as it relates to left turn lanes back into Saco. The left turn lane off Saco Island Terrace near Run of the Mill, I know will be affected by a light in the future, but the left turn out of Gooch Street, which is where all the apartments are and the train station, has always been a difficult left turn, and it's now made more difficult by uphill traffic merging as it approaches the left turn. It also seems as though the turn, the lanes have gotten more narrow. So I know it's just a demonstration project, but I wanted to speak out against it as it's making a difficult left turn out of a public space even more difficult. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Petron. I live at 120 Main Street, and my comments also pertain to that left turn area out of Main Street near the Transportation Center. I think that oftentimes, construction and utility officials in the city forget that that is a residential area. I live right on the street. Between 5:00 PM and 4:00 AM last night, it was a complete disaster. It took me over an hour to get home on Main Street in Saco. I was waiting for someone to come to my home. It took them two hours between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM. I went out to speak to the officials on the street, and the Saco City people from Public Works were rude to me and told me I should accept this because it was for public safety. And then the construction continued past 2:00 in the morning with floodlights streaming into my windows past 4:00 in the morning. I just think that if we're doing something for the benefit of the public, we need to try to be a little more reasonable than that, and particularly when residents like myself try to speak with people who are working on the project, that they should have some consideration for the fact that we live there and that our lives have been disrupted by the process. The turn signal on the left side is becoming so hard to exit your home. It can take a half an hour to an hour to leave your home in the morning. And people that are coming up the hill, they do not see that it is a turn lane to the left. So they're blocking our ability to turn to the left, to go toward the turnpike, to go to work and run our daily lives. Something more needs to be done about this, whether it's a light or something else for public education, but whatever it is, residents who live in that area should be part of the solution and should be notified in advance, particularly of construction that will go all the way into the night and interrupt the evening return home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Counselors, I'm David Plavon. I live at 36th floor Beach Road in Saco. I'm also the chairman of the Saco Shoreline Commission, and I'm here to speak in support of beach management for Saco. This is long overdue, and the time to rectify the shortcoming is now. We have a number of initiatives in the planning stages, the Army Corps 111 project, proposed sheet metal wall at North Avenue dredged for the upcoming season, and these really need to be tied together as part of an overarching plan that integrates with the York County Beach Management Plan to build and maintain engineered beaches. We welcome the return of Taj and Bond. They were here a year ago to start this work. There is no doubt they possess the type of expertise we need to author our plan, but it needs to be noted that a lot has changed in that time. We have a cadre of resources to draw upon to make beach management a success. York County has hired anchor QEA as its engineer, and they are already documenting what is needed to reach category B and G classification. Their engineer really knows our beaches. Maine Geological Survey continues to historically track erosion, and the University of New England not only provided documentation on beach management for Saco, it's been extensively mapping our coastline for the last few years using drones, lidar, and a bathymetry boat. And if you don't know what any of that means, trust me, it's impressive. So we want the plan to be a community effort with the Shoreline Commission and perhaps SOS Saco Bay participating. We've put together a folder of documents that we're glad to share, studies, beach management ideas, et cetera. And also needs to be mentioned that the federal government is spending $45 million to build a spurgetty in Camp Ellis, and we need to support that effort by creating a beach management plan that understands, well, that is a cornerstone of rebuilding our beaches. It is not the cure for all that ails us. And lastly, we want to see a plan that addresses the condition of the beach. A beach has remained somewhat of an eyesore with rocks everywhere, chunks of tar and concrete still in the sand. Plus, the inundation of seaweed keeps people away people we need to support, we need there to support our businesses and rental home market. So if you want to take a look at the north side of Goose Fairbrook and then do a 180 turn and look back, there's a huge difference that we'd like to see changed. So let's make the beach one that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Inga Brown, and I live at 161 Simpson Road, and I'm here to offer some comments this evening on your action item D, one reading, Saco Citizens' Grievance Review Committee Final Report Acceptance. I just wanted to go back and provide a little bit of context and then make some comments based on some of the feedback that some counselors had last, last meeting. So I think some good context is that the last four chronological planning board liaisons have been Counselor Johnston, Counselor McPhail at the time, Counselor Gunn, and Counselor Hatch. And in your vote in December of seven to zero, you approved Counselors Hatch, Johnston, and Gunn to be on the ad hoc committee, and you've put your faith in them to do a very thorough job, and I think you all agreed that at the last meeting, they did a very thorough job. And so what I'm going to ask is that counselors lean into their experience as liaisons to the planning board, their wide firsthand knowledge of planning board processes, the good, the bad, and the ugly over the past many years. And as I said at the last meeting, I fully support the recommendations in the report. I understand that tonight you're accepting the report, but that coming forward in multiple meetings, you'll be tackling these issues sort of one by one, when you can get more into the meat and potatoes, if you will, of each item. But a couple comments, if I may. The citizens' grievance was not filed lightly or over any minor issue. It was the development of the, a longstanding record where compliance or bad decision or advice or votes were cast that were problematic on, on many levels. And so the grievance is now, you are now working on moving forward and moving the city forward with better processes. So just a couple items related to the planning board chair, if I may. So first of all, I did check the ordinance, and so, and I'm sure you know this, but for the planning board ordinance, it says that no more than two members can have the same full-time occupation. So that's, that's good. What I'd like to reiterate here is that the planning board chair is the person who sets the tone for the meetings, facilitates the meetings, and also creates a culture in the board of processes that are fair, equitable, and fully compliant. And I'm going to, I got my eye on the clock. I did a little research, and I just want to share a couple things with you. So when you have a chair who may be a real estate agent or a real estate broker, and I know Counselor Hewitt, you made some comments related to that, I just want to be clear that a real estate agent's work inherently involves buying, selling, and developing property, creating a strong potential for financial gain from decisions made by the planning board. The potential conflict of interest for a real estate professional who's serving also as chair, situations are occurring at every planning board meeting that involve zoning changes, variances, subdivision approvals, or other land use decisions that could impact property values or development opportunities and real estate agents could gain from those developments. Some of you commented that we already have a process in place where someone recuses themselves, the board votes on that, the applicant gets to weigh in if they have-
Excuse me, Inga, we are a minute over.
Okay, thank you. I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
And then the applicant also weighs in if they have any issues with that. One thing to note is that while that process might be working, citizens can never weigh in on that conflict and, and provide any feedback either. So Maine State law declares that a vote is voidable when an official on any question where they have a direct or indirect pecuniary interest. So I'll wrap it up. Real estate agents and real estate brokers can certainly serve on our planning board. They have a wonderful background and tools in their toolbox. But I would like to ask you to really consider that the ad hoc committee's recommendation of not having the chair of the planning board be a real estate agent or broker, I think, is a very healthy choice for our community as we are working so hard, as you all have done, to move our community forward with better guardrails on bias, optics of bias, improper procedure. Thank you. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Chelsea Hill, 108 Bradley Street. I just want to jump off what Inga was talking about just now. Certainly, realtors and real estate professionals have a wealth of experience and knowledge that could benefit the city of Saco, and their expertise should not be overlooked when under consideration for serving on a planning board. But I think that the chair of the planning board is in a unique position to both control the intake and outputs that the planning board takes under advisement or review and steers the entire committee in a direction. So I think that it is imperative that that position be held at a higher standard of, number one, the appearance of impropriety or the appearance of bias, but also the risk that the city of Saco is asking that individual to undertake, because that person is at risk of being approached by individuals who would have bad intentions. And that person then undertakes, you know, those even more secondary and tertiary difficult conversations where they're having to say, I'm sorry, I can't do that, you know, and maybe down the line, those actions that that person takes or those difficult conversations that that person has to navigate harm them after they've left the planning board. It's certainly like, you know, thinking 10 steps ahead, but the actions that the individual and the decisions that the individual undertakes at that level have the potential to further conflict very far down the road, not just in the immediate term, and not just limited to a single applicant or a single project. So I think that it's very important for the city of Saco to tread carefully and be very strategic in who it considers and appoints to that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Counsel. Call in charge, 72 Grant Road, Saco. I just wanted to make a quick comment concerning action item C on tonight's agenda. This is a, this is an action item concerning police surveillance in public spaces. I would like to thank you for the work you do here. I know this is not a money-making opportunity. This is service, and I know that you grind through hundreds and hundreds of pages. These packets get really long, and I appreciate you putting in that work. I know, I know what it takes to do that. So, good for you. I'm finding that this proposal is a little bit spare. I've got here a workshop, item A, and I've got an action item C. All right, this is, this is a piece of municipal policy that is apparently, according to what, and I may have missed something in the agenda or in the packet, but it seems like it's sort of a carte blanche for police surveillance in our public spaces here in our beautiful city. I'd like to start with the recommendation of action item C. Staff recommend that the city council review the information and make a decision on the number of cameras to be installed. It sounds to me that this is something of a foregone conclusion on the basis of the recommendation here. I'm a little bit concerned that this item may not quite be ripe for a passage by this body. I do believe that there, unless, again, unless I've missed something in the packet, setting forth certain other information that I think is highly important in these times concerning police surveillance in, in our public spaces in Saco. So I guess I would start by saying, I'm not sure. It's unclear to me from the, the information that I have in these two pieces of paper here, the exact capabilities of these Verkata surveillance systems. The, the information that's before us suggests that they do have some sort of algorithmic or artificial intelligence capacity. It states here, okay, well, we promise we won't use it for facial recognition, suggesting to me that perhaps it is capable of facial recognition. What other capabilities does this surveillance technology have? And what sort of guardrails, as we're stating here tonight, are we putting in place, other than the proposed order is be it ordered that the council approve the placement of X cameras on existing lights? Where is our policy? Where is the policy language on this? Where are, where does the public get to be able to hold accountable entities who are engaging in the surveillance? All right. So, speaking of Verkata, I'm wondering if at any point in this process, the terms of service for this provider have been reviewed or produced to this body? Because it's one thing to say, oh, we won't use it for this- Because it's one thing to say, oh, we won't use it for this, we won't use it for that, understanding, of course, that this, in a data economy, heck, this is all dedicated to, oh, it's only going to cost us 600 bucks a year, they should be paying us for this data, and what are they doing with the data? Right? How are they storing the data? Saco P D is only keeping it for seven days, they say. I would ask for a little more time, please.
We traditionally give three minutes, and if you just wrap up, consider in your mind that you're wrapping up.
All right, let's wrap it up. I don't know if anyone's reviewed those terms of service, but I'm pretty sure Verkata is not subject to the jurisdiction of this body. All right? What kind of security is going to be on this? We're going to be filming children in these, in our public spaces. What kind of security does Verkata have? What kind of security does our IT have? These are the questions that we should be asking. These are questions of this time. All right? Is the police authorized to disseminate this information to other bodies, other police agencies, ICE? Who is this going to? All right? I submit to you that this is undeveloped.
Here we are, one minute over now.
It's undeveloped, it's unripe. I ask that you ask these questions, develop this further, and put it forth for further public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Don Pylon, 16 Glen Haven Circle. Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm here tonight to address the Grievance Committee report that came out. After reading the 75, 77 pages, I was a little distressed by the appointees that you put on the commission, or the commission. The Grievance Committee and the reason for it, I, the reason for the Grievance Committee seems to have evolved because of the occurrence on Lincoln Street, partly. And because of that, it looks like you appointed Consular Hatch to that, who is the Consul Representative up there, and I think that was a direct conflict of interest. I think it would have been better if you had appointed someone other than the Consular in that ward, maybe somebody else. But be that as it may, it's water over the bridge. So, one of the, one of the things that you or the committee had come up with was perhaps we should be paying the members of the Planning Board because of all the time they put in to the meetings? Well, I would suggest that we don't pay them, we don't pay them, but rather, I read in the, the Planning Board's training mission, under training requirements, there are city issues with accompanying email addresses, Saco's most recent conference that planned, a copy of the Maine Municipal Association's Planning Board manual, and a copy of the recently available land use land booklet published by the Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. All this material is given to them, but is there anybody that's testing them if they've actually reviewed this information? I suggest to you, rather than paying these people, I'd rather see you put the money forward into training. They have to learn an awful lot of information to be very productive members on the Planning Board. So let's not, let's not pay them, let's put the money into training to make them productive. Okay? And having a broker or having somebody in the real estate industry that understands the terms and terminology that we use is very, very useful. I don't want, it would not be my, my position to put a advice, to put somebody in there that's a baker, or somebody that's a, works on a boat builder, but somebody that knows the terminology so that he or she can say to the members of the committee, this is what this means. That's just my advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to Item 7, and that is the approval of the minutes for June 16th, 2025, and July 14th of 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion on the minutes? Counselor Hewitt, then Counselor Berman.
My first discussion on June 16th, I wasn't here, so if I can recuse myself from that one. And on July 14th, I just noted when I reviewed the minutes that there's no mention that I did have some opposition to the grievance, and is that something that would typically be in there, just for the record?
City Administrator? Can we get that re-reviewed, or?
We can review the, the audio.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Berman?
Like Counselor Hewitt, I wasn't at the June 16th minute meeting. I have watched the meeting on video, so I'm familiar with the contents, and I've reviewed the minutes. I'd be comfortable voting on the minutes, but if the Council would prefer, I'm happy to recuse myself also.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? City Administrator, for the July 14th, do you want to take a vote or bring it back?
It probably should be tabled at this particular point.
Is there a Counselor who would like to possibly table the July 14th, pending additional information?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yep. Could we table, table July 14th, pending additional information be added?
Okay, a motion has been made to, to table the 14th, to a later date. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on that item?
There's no discussion for a tabling motion.
Okay. Thank you. Not used to it on the minutes. Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, back to the approval of the June 16 minutes. Any additional discussion on that item? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Upstee.
Up, okay. And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 with one recusal. Okay, moving on to Item 8, that is the consent items this evening. There are two. The first one is the renewal application for a solid waste permit with Agrocycle. And Item Number B is one reading for the confirmation of the City Administrator's appointment of the Human Resource Director. Is there a motion on the consent items? I'm sorry, Item Number C is Council's schedule August 2025.
So moved.
Counselor Johnston? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on those items? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to Item 9, that is the action items. First item up is the public hearing, which is the renewal application for a special entertainment permit for Go See Tice BBQ. And that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mabel Reed Wallace, doing business as Go See Tice BBQ LLC, 810 Portland Road, has applied for renewal of the establishment's special entertainment permit. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment Subsection 93-2. The clerk has also checked with code enforcement, finance department, fire department, and police department, and there were no concerns. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0, public hearing is now open. If there is any member of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to address the Council. Okay, not seeing any members wishing to be recognized. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing, and be it ordered that the City Council grant the renewal application submitted by Mabel Reed Wallace, doing business as Go See Tice BBQ LLC, for a special entertainment permit, I move to approve the order.
Thank you, motion has been made by Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to Item B, that is a public hearing for the renewal application for special entertainment permit for the Golden Rooster Restaurant, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chris Rizziakos, doing business as Golden Rooster Restaurant at 236 Main Street, has applied for renewal of the establishment's special entertainment permit. Permit would be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93-2. The clerk has also checked with code enforcement, finance department, fire department, and the police department, and there were no concerns. Moved to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Counselor Hewitt. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0, public hearing is now open. If there is any member wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. Okay, not seeing any members wishing to be recognized?
I move to close-
Counselor Johnston?
I move to close the public hearing, and be it ordered that the City Council grant the renewal application submitted by Chris Rizziakos, doing business as Golden Rooster Restaurant, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Thank you, motion has been made by Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman? Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, now takes us to Item C, and that is one reading for the cameras for the downtown area, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the, at the June 2nd, Saco City Council Workshop, the police and IT departments presented information on proposal to add Veridekia cameras to several downtown existing traffic light poles. As stated in the workshop, the cameras would be utilized to assist the police department with criminal investigations and motor vehicle collision investigations. The police department would not, with emphasis, use the camera's system for facial recognition. At the June Saco City Council Workshop, the IT department provided some projected costs, pending the IT department checking the intersection light poles for existing equipment and/or fiber connectivity at the mast arm. The IT department learned that signalized intersections already have a cell modem or are on fiber that give the locations internet access. Not having to add the cellular gateway will save $1,200 for the device, $250 per year in license fees, and $480 per year in cellular costs. The new cost per intersection camera would be $3,386.06 for the camera, $93.06 for the mounting arm, and $523.70 annually for license fees, the retail cost. Be it ordered that the City Council approve the replacement of one camera on existing traffic light poles as presented at the June 20, June 2nd, 2025 City Council meeting, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on the item? City Administrator?
Your Honor, if I might, I defer to the Council members if they want to speak first. But my point on this would have been just to say that as a result of the previous meeting, before we installed any more, we wanted to come to the Council, because this is a policy issue, and so we wanted to make sure the Council was comfortable with us adding any cameras. The police chief is recommending these. I, you know, I see that there's pluses to this, but it's really clearly a Council policy issue at this particular point. So I would defer to Council members for the comments.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The member of the public who spoke earlier, I don't see him here now, but I think I asked some similar questions at our last meeting. I appreciate the purpose of these cameras, and I'm for that, but I do have some concerns about the method in which these videos are stored. I do, I did express some concerns at the workshop about who else might have access to these videos, especially with other criminal investigations or other agencies and/or court orders. So, you know, part of the nature of my questions was, I understand our police will not activate the facial recognition software, but what about Customs and Border Patrol, or, or, you know, ICE agents, what about federal agents? Can they gain access, maybe with a warrant, and utilize these videos? I also understand that the Saco Police will be keeping them for a limited time, but I'm wondering about assurances that the company will delete them, or whether they may remain available on another server. So I guess I'm just, I'm just curious for an update on some of those privacy and security concerns, like those that were reflected by that member of the public earlier.
Great, thank you. We do have Director Pinno and Chief Clements here.
Hi, so the cameras that we're looking at are FedRAMP and FIPS 140-2 compliant, which ensures a level of security for the police department based on CGIS compliance. They do not share the videos with third parties, but they can be requested, just like any other subpoena, from another agency. That's definitely possible. The facial recognition, if not turned on in the beginning, doesn't retroactively look for people, it's only from a point in time forward. It doesn't mean that that data can't be extracted and then run through some sort of program or algorithm after the fact with the raw camera footage.
Does that answer all your questions?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Chiefs, do you have anything to add?
So Director Pinero did work on a policy, we do have one. I feel it's very comprehensive, it covers what we're looking for. I want to keep this very tight. Like I said, we're looking to, you know, we have events that happen downtown with the drive-by shooting on Elm Street. There are certain things that, we've been fortunate, we've been able to solve crimes because people cross back into Bedford. They have a camera system, so it's been beneficial. For us, you know, some of these intersection crashes and things like that, I feel would be beneficial for the community to help us get in front of some of these things, but it certainly is up to this body as to whether or not you'd like to have them, and if so, how many.
Counselor Berman, do you have another?
Maybe a comment more than a question, if that's okay. So I can, I can definitely see the utility and need for, you know, for public safety and for crime solving, and I think that well-placed cameras, especially in our busy intersections, could be really useful for that. The countervailing value, I guess in my head, is safety and security versus privacy, and how to strike that balance. And I'm really encouraged that a policy has been developed. What I'm wondering if, and you know, I'd be curious to hear from fellow counselors and staff, but if maybe we shouldn't be thinking about where we're placing them and what that policy looks like before we approve the purchase of a certain number of cameras. It's just, it seems like authorizing the purchase before we've decided where, and seeing that policy might be a little bit premature in my mind.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Sorry, my brain's thinking. So last time we spoke of this, I publicly stated that I supported that, and I still do. I think that the comments that we received earlier from, I forgot his name, but the gentleman that spoke were very valid. I had much of the same questions. I know that we also received-
I know that we also received previously some comments from Ms. Hill, which were way above my understanding, but I thought they were also, you know, pertinent to have an understanding before we do anything. And again, likewise, I would agree with Counselor Berman. So I'm comfortable approving purchasing cameras. I guess part of my question is, are we determining where we're placing them with this motion? That's just an open-ended question. Do you want suggestions or?
City Administrator?
Yeah, I'm, I think we're all set.
Sure.
I think one thing we should do, because I think on this, we should be careful and be deliberative on it. So my suggestion would be to table this item tonight, and we have a map that we can bring to the council and show where we would. It is all based down to some of the finances. We have enough money for another camera within the budget itself, but I think it's important that we take it slow and make sure that the council's comfortable with everything we're going forward on. We haven't had them for all these years, so it's not like it's going to be a problem immediately, but I think we need to be very deliberate on it. We will provide you a copy of the policy and also maybe a copy of a map to show you what areas that we would be interested in looking at. Chiefs, did you have anything to add?
No, sir. I mean, I believe, if I remember correctly, during the workshop, we had a map up that showed, but we're looking for the downtown, essentially the downtown main corridors, Elm Street, Main Street. That's typically where we see most of the things, so that's really the crux of where we're looking.
Right, and I guess from my perspective, given the comment by the gentleman earlier and some of the comments by council members, it would be prudent to take our time and come back to either the next meeting or the meeting after with the whole list of camera locations that the chief has identified and have the council actually vote on, not individual cameras, but say these camera locations, once funding is available, would be authorized. So that's, you know, give a little bit more time for the council to think about it, a little more time to be deliberate.
Counselor Johnston?
Well, what I was going to say was that I'm supportive of, you know, cameras that, like, up to five locations. I just came up with those off the top of my head, knowing the hotspots. But again, as Counselor Berman stated, I'd like to have a policy that council adopts first, and that way the public has an opportunity to weigh in. But I totally think that taking a slow approach is probably warranted. Thank you.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I would just like to add another request for information. City Administrator, if I could, and if you're, I'm assuming we're going to see maybe four or five locations. If we could prioritize those, and that way if we engage in some discussion about funding and limited funding, and I'm very supportive of this as well, but I think it would be good for us to hear from you, if you've got five cameras, which order of priority are we talking about in terms of location? I would appreciate having that.
Thank you. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is more of a question for you, Chief, though, and this is really just to get your professional opinion. Based on events that are currently changing as we speak, I don't have the exact bill in front of me, but we know right now in Augusta, there was a bill that was passed the legislature that limits contracts, similar to what we saw in Wells, between ICE, Immigration Customs Enforcement, and local police departments to carry out basically federal policing with using local resources. Now, the governor hasn't signed that yet. We know the process that if she doesn't sign it, it would become law without her signature, but it's still on standby. So under those circumstances, and based on what you said, Ryan, about like, yes, if there is a subpoena, certainly other law enforcement agencies, whether they state, federal, et cetera, can get their hands on what we are collecting, again, for criminal investigations and murder vehicle collision investigations. Now, it says we don't have the camera turned on so you can see their face, but we can certainly see everything else. That being the case, when we have this climate, where people have legitimate fears of, shall we say, an activist justice department when it comes to their interpretation of immigration law, let's just assume for a moment that what the legislature passed does become law. What protections would you have as a police department to resist any and all use of that camera footage by federal investigators if they wanted to use it for reasons that, say in your personal judgment as a law enforcement officer, would go above and beyond a reasonable interpretation of federal and state law?
My answer would be if the state law is passed, that we're not allowed to do anything with that, then we don't. I mean, we have to follow state law. It's that simple for me.
Yeah. Because we've seen, obviously, you know, the reason behind this question is certainly we've seen state laws that give protection to people in your position, at the same time have the federal government ready to, like, fight that. The idea of having those, if the cameras didn't exist, there is no issue to be had. One could make that issue, that argument, I suppose.
What I can tell you is these cameras are not pan tilt zoom cameras. These are single lens, they look at four different intersections, they're not doing license plate reading, and we had one for 30 days we put up to test and look at. You can't see, I mean, you're looking at, essentially, these are small people when you look at it on a camera. These are not cameras that are pan tilt zoom that we can go afterwards and go in and go, oh, I see Counselor Berman, let's zoom in and see, you know, the button's unassured or something. They don't, that's not these kind of cameras. These just overall look at it, but you know, like, if we had a robbery at a location and somebody ran and we didn't know which direction they ran, and we had a camera at that intersection, we could look and say, well, they didn't come south on Main Street, so they went someplace else. Typically, what we're doing now is spending a lot of time, detective time, officer time, going business to business, house to house, for people that have, whether it's Ring cameras or blank or whatever, seeing if they have anything or talking to businesses to see if they have coverage. We spend a lot of time doing that. And then, once we locate it, we're either doing a subpoena or a search warrant to get that. So you're talking hours and hours of investigation to just figure out if something is there.
I think that was a good differentiation for the public to understand, though, because, again, the gentleman did raise some good points, though, but at the same time, there is a, you know, difference between boilerplate and what actually the police are doing and what we're authorizing you to do. And of course, if you did something that was against what we're authorizing, we're going to carry your waters, so you know how it works out. So we're all on the same page here. We take what we, the authority that we give our police department very seriously, and I want to be on the record for that. That being the case, given the tenor of the discussion that we were just having earlier, in terms of having a policy in place before we commit to anything, to buying anything, I think is prudent, because, like I said, I put in one camera just on the recommendation of others for the simple reason that the prices were less than expected, but at the same time, certainly, you wouldn't want to, you'd want to have more than one camera. I mean, this is, you know, so that wouldn't make any sense to me. So I'm prepared to table this, pending a discussion of the policy itself, and of course, I won't make that table motion unless any people want to talk, because I don't want to preempt any more debates. So thank you for your help. I appreciate that, Chief.
Certainly.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, just one more quick point. You know, I think the gentleman who spoke earlier recommended seeing the terms of service from the company. I think that would be useful for our next discussion, as well as just, I know Verkata is a tool we currently use, unless it fits into a current ecosystem. I do find on a quick Google search that they were fined by the FTC and the Department of Justice just over a year ago for data breaches, which would be very embarrassing to us if our video leaked out. And so I just want maybe a little bit more discussion about that company also and what steps they've taken in the meantime to secure their data so we can be confident that such a thing won't happen again. So if we could add that to the discussion, that'd be useful.
I'm not a technology person.
I mean, the guarantee that something, that a breach won't happen again, is impossible to set as a standard. The other thing is, you know, we look at, we did look at multiple vendors when we were looking at these systems, and each one of them have experienced something at some point, and it doesn't seem like that's getting any. And, you know, when you start to look at big data of, especially video, it makes it enticing for people to go after with everything that they have. So, you know, we would ensure, we have talked to Verkata, we know and understand what changes they've made. They've removed the ability for even their support team to access any of our footage without us, our consent, for even their support. So, you know, there are standards that have changed. Sure, they have experienced a breach, and so has almost every other tech company that exists.
Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Make a motion to table.
Okay, motion has been made by Counselor Johnston to table. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Second by Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to table passes seven zero. Okay, that now takes us to item D, and that is one reading of the Saco Citizens Grievance Review Committee final report acceptance, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Enclosed in tonight's packet is a PDF file containing the final report from the Saco Citizens Grievance Review Committee. The content of the report has been thoroughly reviewed by the three ad hoc committee members and is provided for presentation and review. Counselors Hatch, Gunn, and Johnston provided a brief presentation during New Business at the July 14th city council meeting, and during that discussion, it was determined that this item would be returned to the city council under action items to formally accept the final report. Be it ordered that the city council accept the final report of the Saco Citizens Grievance Review Committee and further schedule follow-up action at future meetings, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion on the item? Counselor Hewitt and Counselor Berman?
Quick question. We are just accepting that the report is final. We're not accepting any changes to the ordinance or the final report.
Correct. You are accepting the report as presented, and then we will be doing future meetings with each individual item for discussion and resolution.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Berman?
I was just going to make that same point, just to be clear to the public, that this is accepting the report. It was well-written, it was thoroughly researched, and this closes the grievance review committee, but it does not enact any of the changes they suggested. Those will come forward in future meetings.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not to potentially steal any Counselor Hatch's thunder, but on page, let's see here, page two of 72 of the general attachment, well, under the ad hoc grievance review committee recommendations, we do have them pretty much organized, one through five, and our intention was to basically, I think, do a couple of meetings where we, you know, maybe do one, two, three, and then the other meetings, four through five, is a first reading, and then we can take the temperature of the council, like through any three meaning process, if we want to move on these to public hearing or dispose of them, depending on council's judgment. But that way, again, it's fair to the rest of the council, because allow us to debate these points individually, perhaps modify them through, you know, change as we have the right to do, and I think that would be the best approach.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Counselor Gunn, you stole my thunder, but that's okay. I appreciate you doing that. No problem. I just want to add a little bit to that commentary, and this is my opinion, not the opinion of my fellow counselors who served on the ad hoc committee. That's just a consideration I want to throw out there to the entire council, since as we move forward as a full council to review the recommendations from the ad hoc committee, I want to remind the council that these grievance issues have been raised by hundreds of citizens who have spent years observing what they believe are breakdowns in governance. These are not careless accusations made by NIMBYs that some on this council and in our state legislature have unfairly labeled. These are issues expressed by intelligent, concerned citizens who simply want to see reasonable and smart governance policies that result in fair, equitable, and transparent outcomes. This expectation also applies to the major local municipal governance challenge of our time, which in my opinion is land use. The ad hoc committee, after carefully reviewing the grievance petition, believes that these citizen concerns deserved respectful consideration. The committee's recommendations not only reflect that respect, but also offer long-term solutions to rebuild full trust, confidence, and ongoing respect from the citizens who actually elect us to sit in these council seats. So as we move forward to address these recommendations, we all need to objectively consider the recommendations. If what has been presented by the ad hoc committee is not to your liking, then be prepared to provide better alternative recommendations for remedies. Focus on remediating the issues. To blatantly ignore the citizen issues that have been brought forward in this grievance is tantamount to ignoring the very constituency we have been elected to serve. In preparation for the upcoming discussions, I strongly recommend that we all review the history leading to the grievance petition and the events that triggered the calls to action. There were approximately 15 planning board meetings over multiple years where the Lincoln Village project was discussed. A few current council members attended some of those meetings. I attended all of them, either in person or via video feed. All videos are available in the meeting archives on the planning department website. Reviewing this evidence before the council discussion will help you understand the rationale and validity of the citizens' grievance issues. From my perspective, these issues are genuine, and the recommendations from the ad hoc committee aim to address them. I look forward to a very productive discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero on acceptance of the report. Okay, moving on to item E, that is one reading to amend the fiscal year 2026 property tax due dates and the interest rate rates, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. On July 2nd, 2024, the City of Saco contracted with KRT appraisal to perform a full commercial and industrial revaluation. As contracted, KRT has completed an appraisal and revaluation of all taxable commercial and industrial real property parcels located in Saco. The field work and data analysis are complete. KRT is currently sharing the new assessments with commercial and business owners and will be completing the project on August 11th, 2025. The tax commitment will follow the project completion. As a result of the several week delay, this suggested motion will change the first half tax payment due dates. The first half tax payment due dates will be as follows. The first half will be due October 6, 2025, with interest accruing from October 7, 2025. The second half due date is March 10, 2026, with interest accruing from March 11, 2026. Amendments to the Easy Pay due date, the Easy Pay program for fiscal year 26 will now be due in eight monthly payments, beginning October 2025 and ending May 2026. Be it ordered that payment for the first half taxes be due on October 6, 2025, with interest accruing from October 7, 2025, and payment for the second half due on March 10, 2026, with interest accruing from March 11, 2026. Easy Pay plan shall now be due in eight monthly payments from October 2025 to May 2026. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman? Any discussion on the item? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Well, I guess, I think I already know the answer, but I'll ask it anyway. The commercial revow that has just occurred, those new evaluations will be in place for this current year, correct? When the tax bills go out, that new valuation- in place for this current year, correct? When the tax bills go out, that new valuation, all right. Um, and then just, uh, my only comment was, I'm just giving a heads up to council. Property owners have received these notices, and they're alarming. And I, I mean, I, I'll tell you, one property I manage has seen a six-hundred percent increase. It's a nine-thousand-dollar tax increase. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just throwing it out there. It's, it's, it's rather disturbing to see. Um, when you start going through properties and seeing their increases, I don't, I don't know how we're going to have affordable housing when mo- most of these are multifamily, and there's no way you're, they're going to be able to absorb those increases. So with these increases will come rent increases throughout the community. So just be aware. Thank you.
Just if I might, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
First of all, the, another reason for the delay is to make sure that all the hearings were people coming forward that have, uh, concerns about the adjustments in the property values. So there will be hearings ongoing. Unfortunately, it's been a while since the commercial industrial has been rebalmed. Back in, uh, tw- two years ago, uh, they, the commercial and, uh, industrial did have a reprieve, uh, and we had that major increase for our residential. I don't disagree with the council on the, the issue. Uh, it's just that we, this just shows us we should be doing these evaluations on a more frequent basis. But again, you go through the process and, um, and certainly people have the right to, uh, to challenge the assessments, but it, it's happening all over the state. It's not just happening here.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, just to echo some of that, you know, sudden jumps in, in property tax rates are incredibly disruptive to people's planning and budgeting and, and, you know, their, their ability just to persist in their business or, or rental property. And, and I get that, and I understand that, and I don't want to minimize that hardship. Uh, but the truth is, what really should have happened is we should have done this revaluation some time ago, and it should have been stepping up to the current level incrementally over time. Uh, unless the current valuation is unfair, the, the current rates, the, the value of the property has gone up, and the current valuation will match that, and, and the tax rate will be accurate and fair compared to our residential taxpayers. And so while the, the jump is understandably unacceptable and shocking and, and disruptive, what the actuality of it is, is, is some of these properties haven't been paying their fair share in prior years. And they've got a bit of a reprieve from what the actual valuation and therefore tax rate should have been over the prior years. So, you know, the way we prevent this moving forward is to do these revaluations more often so that we, we mark the property values to fairness, right, in, in small increments as opposed to large ones. But, but we, this kind of parity is absolutely essential because otherwise our residential taxpayers pay a larger-than-airfare share of taxes, and it's simply unavoidable. So while, while regrettable the timing and the extent of it, uh, the error isn't in the current valuation. It's in the fact that it took us so long to get here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hewitt?
Um, and this may be a silly question, but it says that there could be eight monthly payments to spread it out. Is it possible, or would it be helpful to the, the landlords if they spread it out to twelve payments so they could handle the absorption of a, a change like this?
I don't have an answer to the question, but I'll try to find one.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to item F, that is the first reading of the Technical Design and Construction Standards Manual, the TDCSM update. And that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. City staff, uh, from Public Works, Water Resource Recovery, and Planning have been drafting critical updates to the city's Technical Design and Construction Standards Manual, or the TDCSM. This manual, originally adopted by City Council on March 22nd, 2021, details the city's standards for streets, drains, and sewer systems. This update adds pump station details and requirements, municipal street lighting requirements, traffic signal standards, and a list of standard conditions of approval and requirements, along with updated forms for compliance purposes. There are several reserved sections for future standards to be incorporated. This is an initial draft, which is envisioned to change as the manual is reviewed by the Planning Board in August. The review process for this item after first reading is as follows. Be a public hearing and review with the Planning Board, with recommendations from the Planning Board to City Council, a public hearing with City Council, and then a final reading with City Council. We had ordered that the City Council approves the first reading of the Technical Design and Construction Standards Manual and further moves to schedule its public hearing on August 18th, 2025. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Edwards?
Second.
Any discussion on the item?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Um, considering the consent item, the date, the 18th, doesn't that need to be changed?
Yes, it does.
Yes. Thank you. Counselor Hatch, if you'd like to change your motion to the 25th?
Uh, yes, I, I do agree to move the public hearing to August 25th, 2025.
Thank you, Counselor Ed- Counselor Edwards, would you like to keep the second?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Okay, any other additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, that completes the action items. Now moving on to item 10 under New Business. First item up is a workshop presentation for the local comprehensive, comprehensive beach management plan. And, yep, with us, we've got Director Moore.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Administrator. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to bring the, uh, local comprehensive beach management plan. This was brought to you all, uh, last year in July. After it was brought to the council meeting, uh, York County EMA kind of embarked on their own, uh, beach management coastal resiliency plan. Uh, since then, it's kind of been determined that, that we paused it for a little while to make sure there was no redundancy, you know, us doing the same work as the, the York County. Uh, currently, York County is focused on the category G and the category B, uh, uh, beach systems. So at this, this time, the city's prepared to continue discussions of this local comprehensive beach management plan. Uh, I have Rob Adams here with, uh, Ty and Bond. He's going to go through a presentation with us to kind of go over what we're looking to do. And, uh, we feel that it's, it's time to take a proactive approach to the beach management here in Saco. So I'll turn it over to Rob.
Evening, everyone. Sorry. So Rob Adams with, uh, Ty and Bond. I'm actually, uh, with Halverson Design. We're a, a smaller design studio within the larger Ty and Bond organization, so we're landscape architects, urban designers. Um, and as Travis said, we were here a year ago, um, and it was a pretty efficient, uh, discussion. Uh, I will say that I don't have any answers tonight, so you're welcome to ask, but I'm not going to give you any definitive answers. We are a very deep bench. I will be, in many ways, the air traffic controller of a very large team. We won't have all the masses at all time on the project, but what I will say is that we're, uh, a breadth of skill sets, everything from environmental, ecology, intertidal management, permitting, civil engineering, landscape architecture. Uh, and so we have an incredibly robust team that we'll be bringing on as advisors as we move through this process. We also have brought on both Woods Hole Group and, uh, Peter Slavinsky. Uh, we'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, as I mentioned, we are a broad spectrum of, uh, design firm, both from an engineering permitting, uh, and landscape architecture point of view. We've been doing work in the area, uh, in New England for thirty-plus years and, uh, call New England and the coastline our home. We have offices all over New England, uh, again, pride ourselves on understanding the environment and the people and the social, uh, construct of the area. So as I mentioned, Woods Hole Group, Kirk Bosma from Woods Hole Group will be, uh, a part of the team. Uh, they did a lot, uh, or not a lot, but all of the modeling around the, uh, Army Corps options for the jetty. And so, and I'm a longtime kind of colleague of Kirk's, and we've been working together a long time. So he's going to come in and help us understand the modeling, the energy, uh, associated with, um, as they call it, the Monte Carlo system. They run, uh, a series of, uh, storm models that both are based on historic storms, but also on future, uh, climate change, uh, modeling data. So Woods Hole Group has essentially created, uh, hydrodynamic models, uh, for the entire, uh, eastern seaboard almost, um, but definitely within, uh, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and the state of Maine. And then Pete Slavinsky with Main Geology, uh, is also going to provide an advisory role. He's been down here a lot. He has a lot of, obviously has a lot of insights, and so we're going to use him from kind of a history point of view, but also from an ecology point of view. He's really going to, uh, stay very high level with us. So, uh, getting to the specifics of the project, it's really three phases that we're going to be looking at. The first is more or less inventory. I think one of the objectives of this project is to, is to gather all the data that exist out there. Uh, when we were working with Pat, uh, prior year, like his concern was there's just so much information out there, and we need to have one consolidated, uh, report that has all that information. So some of this will just be collecting data, analyzing it, and giving you an executive summary. The real meat of this first phase is to run, uh, the modeling that Woods Hole Group has done, both, uh, from a, I'll say, a pre-Army Corps project, but also a post-Army Corps project. And then, as Travis mentioned, the work that York County has done systematically and looking at the work, uh, proposed for Saco's coastline and making sure that any of the modeling and any of that work is incorporated into the modeling so that we're at a kind of a, a level playing field, so to speak, now that the York Initiative is clearly defined. The second phase sometime, we're assuming this first phase starts off shortly, and it'll be a four-ish month process of essentially defining what the risks are and collecting the data. Part of that process will be a, a community workshop, which we, um, call Gather, right? It's really about gathering ideas. We're not about kind of putting anything out there, per se, but just getting information from the community and from the stakeholders. The second phase, uh, starting in the new year, uh, is really starting to identify those opportunities and constraints and starting to put down some solutions, uh, on the table and testing those out, uh, both internally and externally with the community. And so then would be a second community workshop, it's called Share, clever, right? Uh, workshop in which we share ideas with the community and get feedback from them. And I think the real, uh, kind of importance of this is doing the work internally, but also putting it out there and having the ability for others, uh, the community, to start, uh, giving some input. And it's really about building a constituency. And so this idea, another part of this project is to identify a plan so that as, uh, private landowners start to have their own initiatives or, uh, begin to want to plug into something, there's a larger vision. And so if we can build a, a consensus with the community, make it an open process, that really starts to make it a long-term solution. As we like to say, even on our open spaces, right, anything that has kind of a grassroots ownership with the community and the users is a much more successful project. And then lastly, the last phase is really just the documentation phase, taking all the information that we've gotten. We have a very talented staff providing you with a visually rich document, uh, which ultimately is a living document, right? No one, uh, is going to get it right from day one. And so this document we're going to provide you is going to be something that has, I'll say, a lot of good fences, a lot of good metrics and information, but it's not going to be overly prescriptive because it needs to be a long-term document. So really, the genesis of this is the spur jetty. Um, I think, starting construction next year, uh, with the sand deposition right there at Camp Ellis. And then the following year will be the, uh, kind of development of that spur jetty, that little arm you see coming off of that. And really, the crux of this is after they're done, understanding what that means to the City of Saco for both the maintenance and what can we expect from an erosion and an evolution of the coastline, uh, directly at Camp Ellis. Um, there clearly, as shown in this graphic, there's clearly been a lot of evolution that's happened at Camp Ellis over the course of the last century. And so we're trying to understand, uh, using Woods Hole's group's models, using that with the new jetty information, starting to get a better understanding of what we can do to help, uh, resolve this solution. Some of this will be a land use study, uh, understanding where commercial and residential and, uh, city right-of-bays are. We're not talking about retreat. Uh, we're simply talking about how to, uh, mitigate and stop the erosion. But then while we're at it, uh, also understand if there is any land use opportunities in which we can look at additional public realm, look at right-of-bays and their uses, et cetera. And then lastly, there's really kind of three zones that we're focusing on. There is three zones that City of Saco has along their coastline. Clearly, Camp Ellis is the most dynamic and the most energy and the most focused, especially with the spur jetty. And then this Zone Two, uh, just to the north of that, is a section of the beach where there is a right-of-way between the private ownership and, uh, and the shoreline. Some of this process will also be, uh, working with, uh, your on-call, uh, attorney to understand property, uh, property extents as well. And then lastly, the Zone One, uh, to the far north is defined as, uh, private property is running straight to the coastline. There's no right-of-way, no, uh, vehicular right-of-way between the coastline and the private property. So those will be the areas, uh, that we kind of focus on, develop typologies for those three different areas and start to, uh, provide you with a set of toolkit, uh, to help both short-term solutions, right? What can you do in the next five years, and then what's the long-term picture look like as climate change continues? I think Travis is going to jump in with next steps, but happy to answer any questions when he's done. Thanks.
So then our, our next steps is, uh, staff will prepare a budget amendment to, uh, for Phase One to bring back to council for approval. Uh, there's another round of the community action grants that are opening up, which we plan on applying for. That is a grant amount up to seventy-five thousand dollars with, uh, with no matching funds. So we're, we're going to be applying for that and hoping the, to, uh, get awarded that to be able to, you know, fund some of the, some of the later-on phases. And we certainly have opportunity for questions.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to both of you for that great presentation. Uh, I, I really appreciate it, and I'm certainly on board and a big supporter of the need for a local beach management plan. I also just want to note, uh, Director Moore, that, that I just hear great things about the works that Public Works has been doing over the last year or two in, in fighting coastal erosion and repairing from the storms. So my, my thought of needing a beach management plan is, is not at all a critique of the work that's been done, but, but really actually to reinforce it, right? And you guys have been doing great work, but to lay it, lay it out, delineate it, make sure the expectations are clear, and make sure that our investments are, are as efficient and as effective as possible. And, and really to, to help you and to, and to celebrate the work you've been done and create a plan to keep that work going, going forward, and help council know what we need to do that. One of my concerns about the beach management plan is this has to be one of the most well-studied sections of coast in Maine, right, between the Army Corps project and all their bath metric and wave energy work, uh, the work the county is doing, the work that UNE is doing. Uh, there's just, just a huge amount of, of studies and, and data on this coast. And so I want to make sure we're being really efficient about that, and we're not replicating work that's already been done or, or paying for it to be done a third, fourth, or fifth time, and we don't end up with a county-level plan, a regional plan done by SNPDC, and a city-level plan that don't speak to each other, aren't integrated, and aren't coordinated. Then we're just going to have, have paid for the same studies coming up with different Then we're just going to have paid for the same studies, coming up with different suggestions, and kind of be lost. And so I really want to make sure that we're thoughtful about how we do that, and, you know, I liked a lot of the things that you said, and it seems like a very thoughtful process. But I'm also just a little bit concerned about having lots of chefs in the same kitchen coming up with competing plans and paying for that work to be done in multiple ways. You know, that's especially true, given the county's asset of the dredge, that we hope we have a dredge in the winter, the Army Corps and their fills, and along with everything else that's going on. And, you know, I think we heard from David Plavain earlier, who just really spoke really articulately about our overall goal is to make sure that our beach is protected and great, and just to make sure all of that gets incorporated. So those are my thoughts right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Counselor Hewitt? So reviewing these numbers, I come up with a total of 1.91 million. Would that be just the consulting fees, or does that involve some of the cost of doing the restoration of the beach?
Are you talking, this slide?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's 100, I don't know, I don't know the number. It's not a million, it's 180,000, 186,000.
Oh, okay. All right.
Sorry. And we put ranges, like, we're pretty confident on the first phase, but obviously there'll be things that get revealed, and so we've given Travis a proposal that has hard numbers, but understand that as this moves forward and either scope decreases or increases, right, we just provided a range for Phase Two and Three, so.
Your Honor, may I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
So I just, I think getting to what the counselors were asking, so anchor engineering, working with the county, is looking at providing the city with the information to create a category G.
G, yes.
Situation.
Yes.
And that will be paid through a grant once they have all the information available. So my question would be, to help us understand, when we get the category G, the FEMA, in order to reimburse the city if there's another event, would look to the city to maintain the dunes and other things. So the importance of a local management plan is to be able to document to FEMA that we are doing what is supposed to be done, and therefore can get reimbursement for any damage done in that area. Is that correct?
Yes, that's part of it, yes.
So that's why, in our mind, you'd both have the anchor engineering doing some work that would actually get us to the category G situation, and then after that, have a local beach management plan. The Public Works and the City Council would have to fund to maintain so that if there is another event, which probably will be, that we can get reimbursed for those costs to replace the dunes. Is that pretty much it?
Yes, and there, I mean, a lot of the FEMA projects we're working on, right, it's not always the silver bullet, right? The category G may not be the silver bullet solution, and so there may be an evolution. And so that'll be, we're setting ourselves up for having those ongoing conversations with FEMA around funding, right?
But the important thing is, you have to get the category G before you can go any further.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just want to go back to the funding numbers. So this is all in current fiscal year. So I'm just curious, you have to remind me, because I can't remember, I don't have my budget book with me, but what did we budget, if anything, for this during the?
To, if I might.
Yeah, please.
To bring your, to give you the background, we had about $150,000 of ARPA money left, and because of the deadline looming, what we did is we put that on account with the, with the county. So anchor engineering, the other communities that are participating, had to put money up as well. But we were utilizing the money from ARPA to pay for many of those bills. I would have to go back and look at the capital. Do you recall it all, Travis? If we've put some money in for this particular item? I can't recall off the top of my head.
Not specifically for the beach management plan, but it was for some coastal resiliency funding, half of the sheet by wall, stuff like that.
The, to follow up, thank you. To follow that up is that we will probably come back and look if we have the money for the first phase. The second phase, hopefully, we can get a grant to pay for that. And then the third phase, if money's available, look towards the end of the fiscal year to see what might be available on a, on our spending threshold to maybe do that. So I think it's important to recognize that part of that, or good part of that, hopefully will be funded through a grant.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any additional questions. Thank you both very much. Look forward to working with this.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Item B is the Camp Ellis trolley funding. I am removing that item pending additional information for a future date. Item number 11 is the administrative update. City Administrator Behanko?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you very much. I'll just go through a couple items that we have. Is the RFP for F, get my glasses on, for the F of 550 four-by-four one-ton Parks and Recreation Department bids will be accepted until 1:00 PM on Thursday, July 31st at the Saco Public Works Department, 15 Phillips Spring Road, Saco, Maine. RFP two, 2025 T-250 all-wheel-drive Ford Transit cargo van. City of Saco is soliciting bids for the two, 2024, two, 2025 T-250 all-wheel-drive Ford Transit cargo vans for the Facilities and School Department. Bids will be accepted until 1:00 PM on Thursday, July 31st at the Saco Public Works Department, 15 Phillips Spring Road, Saco, Maine. Basically, all other information is from the other projects that have already started to take place.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay, not seeing anyone. Moving on to Item 12, that's council discussion and comments. Any councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I just wanted to touch upon the earlier discussion on the minutes. I didn't vote against tabling it because I didn't want Counselor Hewitt to have her opportunity to be in the minutes. I have always advocated for more substance in those minutes, but I did just want to point out that we've had historically a policy, and in those minutes, you'll see that Counselor Hatch stated for the record, and then it was verbatim for what Counselor Hatch stated at the time, or perhaps thereabouts, verbatim. So that's the only reason I voted against it, but I'm more than willing to amend the rules to bring back what was in place when I, my first term on council, where it was verbatim. But we've switched away from that because it does create a lot of work for the city clerk. And so ever since then, anytime I want something that's in the minutes, I've said it for the record. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Noted. Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
To echo that, from what Counselor Johnston said, I've gotten the habit of doing that myself, Counselor Hewitt, for the simple reason that sometimes I think what I said was probably worth, you know, for posterity, and then other times I'm like, oh, it's probably not my best tonight, though. So yeah, this is definitely not on the record. It's for everybody in the room, and let's just forget my horrible syntax. So that's the advantage we have. It also saves some time, and also, if you have an off night, it's not recorded in 50 years for the library to see. So, you know, either way, we could go on it, but it does have its pluses and minuses either way.
Great, thank you.
For example, this is not on the record.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to Item 13, that is an executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you. Mayor McPhail, be it ordered that the City Council enter into executive session pursuant to our, I'm sorry, Emma RSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056, C Real Estate, Chapter 81, Piney Woods Road Properties, Abutting Saltaire Avenue, A Personnel Matters Interim City Administrator, and A Personnel Matters City Administrator Search.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston? Oh, Berman, thank you. All right, we'll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero to enter executive session at 8:03, and we will meet downstairs in the conference room.[1221.83] Motion passes seven zero to enter executive session at eight oh three and we will meet downstairs in the conference room.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. We'll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to exit executive session at eight thirty-five. And is there report? Councilor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a motion. Be it ordered that the city council denies the request to sell map eleven lot seventy-one dash one as presented in the July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five city council executive session. Selling this property would land lock access to the Saltair Avenue paper street from Pioneer Woods Road. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Councilor Berman with a second by Councilor Johnston. We'll call vote, Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. And is there a second report? Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to appoint the current deputy city administrator for community development and acting city administrator Emily Cole Prescott to the position of interim city administrator starting August twenty-eighth until a new city administrator begins at the temporary rate of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards.
That's correct.
Okay, we'll call vote. Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Okay, and item fifteen is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Hatch, you guys are changing your voices on me.
I'm going through puberty right now.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll call vote. Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
No.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six one to adjourn at eight thirty-seven. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.